It's 9:00 AM, Tuesday, December the 28th, 2021. Wilson County Commissioners Court is now in session. If you would, please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we bow our heads and come to you and give you thanks for helping us make it through these last two difficult and trying years. May you bless the next year and make it healthy and prosperous for everyone. Would you give us guidance for all of our governments from the federal, state, and local? Help them make good decisions for our future. Give us protection and security from all enemies, both foreign and domestic. This we ask of you. Holy name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas's side, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, moving right along. Do we have any public comments?
No, we do not.
Oh, you want to make one?
No, sir. I'll pass.
Okay. Then now we're going to certificates of completion and awards. Okay. Here we go. I've got six. I'm trying to get them lined up to where they would be together. I don't know if you and Nikki took all the same classes. Evidently you didn't.
She did, but one more question.
Are you and the other Nikki?
Yes.
Okay. Certificate of completion. Okay, Texas Library Archives Commission, Nikki Storer has completed the course, Lending Wi-Fi Hotspot Devices to Patrons, December 16th, 2021, one hour credit. Okay. Certificate of Achievement. This is to certify that Nikki Storer has completed the course, Key Elements of a Project Plan, December 15th, 2021, one hour credit. Coalition to Advance Learning. April. Okay. And Coalition to Advance Learning. Certificate of Achievement. This is to certify that Nikki Storer has completed the course, Evaluating Your Project Plan, December 15th, 2021, one hour credit. Okay. Certificate of Achievement. This is to certify that Candace Nicole Marick has completed the course, Creative Spaces and Family Engagement in Libraries, December 9th, 2021. Info people. This is one hour credit. Okay. Web Junction. Certificate of Attendance. Candace Nicole Marick has completed the webinar, Our Story Bridge, Creating Community Through Stories, December 9th, 2021, one hour credit. And Web Junction. Certificate of Completion. Candace Nicole Marick has viewed the webinar Outreach Outside the Box, December 9th, 2021, one hour credit, info people. And Certificate of Participation. This is to certify that Candace Marick, Nikki, has participated in LJ Design Institute, Designing for Equity and Conclusion. Live date, November 30th, 2021. Session length, 40 minutes. Okay. MSI Information Services. People at library been working?
We have taken.
He has.
No, sir, that is him.
Okay. Now here we go. Okay. Agenda Item Number Five, Richard L. Jackson County Judge, Discuss and Take Action on Appointing Commissioners to ESDs. And I'm going to read them all and take one motion for the whole thing. Okay. A, ESD One, George Jones and Mike Trainor. Okay, and they're both here. B, ESD Two, Glenn Clainham and Rudy Cantu. They're both here. C, ESD Number Three, Ray Skaggs, Jeff Doogie, and Cindy Couch. They're not here. Okay. D, ESD Four, Stephen Moore and Kenneth Griffin. He's not here. Neither one of them are here. And E, ESD Number Five, Mike Jackson and Ryan Pipper. And I do not see either one of them here. But I will entertain a motion to.
All of them?
Yes, unless somebody has any other people they want to nominate.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Yes, sir.
Motion by Commissioner File, second by Commissioner Wiley, that we approve all Commissioners for all the ESDs. Is there any more discussion?
I have a question. Because I did have one other person that was interested in ESD Five. And I'm not really sure how we're supposed to handle that. But I'm assuming that Mr. Jackson and Mr. Pipper are willing to continue to serve.
Everybody that I have talked to has been a learned you.
Okay.
But if you want to nominate your person, we can bring it into a vote or or leave it like it is, like the motion is.
I think at this point I prefer it like it is. I just, I don't know enough about the procedures and everything. I don't want to mess anything up.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, everybody that's here, y'all want to get sworn in while we're here?
Yes. Okay, over here, Nicky, is this good enough?
That'd be good. I'm just getting everybody's. Everybody's much better. Okay. I would raise your right hand when I say aye, I'll repeat y'all's name. Okay, in the manner and by the, in the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, Oath of Office, I do solemn swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of.
Do solemn swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties. Okay, I'll shorten it up.
Yeah, yeah.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of.
Yes, ESD Number Two.
Okay. Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
Excuse me, of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, here's another. We'll just, okay. The State of Texas, State of Appointed Officer, aye. Do solemn swear or affirm.
Do solemn swear or affirm.
That I have not directly or indirectly.
Not directly or indirectly.
Paid, offered, or promised to pay.
Paid, offer, or promised to pay.
Contributed, or promised to contribute.
Contributed, or promised to contribute.
Any money or thing of value.
Any money or thing of value.
Or promised any public office or employment.
Or promised any public office or appointment.
As a reward to secure my appointment.
As a reward to secure my appointment.
Or confirmation thereof.
Or confirmation thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, thank you. Now, if y'all want to fill these out, here's yours, George. You have a pen?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mike, here's yours.
I'll fill them out first.
Okay. Glenn. And Rudy. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
We appreciate what y'all do.
Thank you, sir.
Kind of a thankless job at times.
But we appreciate it.
We all know that.
We will get the rest of it. Everybody else. Okay, Agenda Item Number Six, Gary Martin, Commissioner Precinct One, Six A, Update on Personnel Policy Manual Committee.
Thank you, Judge. We've met twice and we've been looking and comparing our personnel manuals and others. One of the items that we identified that we don't have in our manual is a mission and a vision statement. So we'll come up with one, but I would, if you guys have any suggestions or anything you'd like to see included in that, shoot me an email and we'll certainly consider when we finalize a mission and vision statement for the county. Anybody have any questions about that?
That's it, okay. Then Six B, Update on Texas LAP Training.
Okay, I think y'all know I contacted Mr. Marlington and I have some dates set up, which is January 24th through 26th. I'll be sending y'all an email next week to get a head count of who all you want to send. And we'll need to make sure we got everybody that is going to be there so they can carry enough manuals and everything on the third day in the morning is the day that they will test operators on equipment. And so I'll put that in the email too. So if you want to have an operator tested, the purpose of it is to determine what level of follow-on training might be whether they need to basically be intermediate or the advanced class. And we're going to test on the maintainer, wheel loader, and a laboratory compacteur room. That's what they're going to be testing on. And so if you want to participate that third day, again, I just need to know. And I'll send out a detailed email next week. And it will be at the Expo Center. And it will be, it'll pretty much be all day from like eight to five, I'm working on finalizing the hours.
We just got a clock in line?
Well, probably the, I'm going to test it one day at my yard. Wants to figure out how many people we've got on the server.
Is there a limit? How many people do you want?
Classroom book will have to be inside.
Okay. But there probably won't be, what, twenty or so people?
Yes, if everybody, if everybody comes.
Are the men going to be to bring lunch or?
Uh, the way he explained that is he can, he's flexible. If they want to bring lunch or if they want to chip together and order something, we can do that and he'll sort in the class. But if they want to go take an hour, hour and fifteen minutes to lunch and go out and eat and then come back, he's flexible in that. We can talk about that too.
Just wondering what to tell me.
Yeah, I guess kind of need to figure out because I mean, we could probably a couple of options, options that we could do, you know, as far as somebody here providing some lunches or something. Or order Subway one day or whatever, you know. I don't know, everybody's so different when it comes to eating.
Is there going to be a hotline of the class issues?
Yeah, they'll, they'll get, they'll get a booklet and everything. The first day and a half, they will include the OSHA ten-hour training class as well as some general safety. So everybody will get their OSHA card for that that's in attendance full-time for that first day and a half.
So they'll get a certificate for OSHA.
What are the dates?
It's January 24th, 25th, and 26th. And maybe into the morning of the 27th. I've forgotten. But I'll call you on that.
They said on Monday, Tuesday, and?
Yes, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday.
Okay. Okay. Anything else about, any more questions or anything? And moving right along, the Agenda Item Number Seven, Richard L. Jackson County Judge, Brenda El Trevino, County Auditor, Discuss and Take Action on Engaging Armstrong Bond and Associates for the Fiscal Year 2021 External Audit.
Judge, I have the engagement letter provided by Debbie Fraser with Armstrong Bond and Associates. They are the external audit firm that did our external audit for last fiscal year. So they did a very good job. Again, they're familiar and they do multiple counties. So I'm recommending that we proceed with them. The cost of the external audit is, I believe it's forty-five thousand. Yes. And that also includes a single audit because we have to provide a completely separate single audit for our federal awards because we exceeded seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal awards. So they do a separate audit working with Michelle.
We have that money budgeted?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I knew it was going to, last year we paid thirty-eight thousand, so it went up at six or seven thousand.
Okay, did we have before them?
Uh, in 2019, we had the firm out of Houston, Tim Applewhite in his group.
Yeah. What were they? How much? Just out of curiosity.
Theirs, yeah, theirs last year, well, when they gave us the equipment. The engagement letter for last year, it was like eighty thousand, eighty-two thousand. Yeah, and because they're a larger firm that comes out of Houston and.
Okay, you never were here when we had Wayne Bauer.
No.
And he was like twelve thousand.
Yeah.
So you wonder what you get. But we had him for like twenty years and then.
We survived.
Finally, what's that?
We survived.
We survived.
Yeah, we got five. We're all here. It's good, but these people I've watched and I've watched when Iron Company was here and these others are a little more.
In-depth.
Yeah, a lot more in-depth, let's put it that way.
Yeah. Yeah, so we anticipate to start probably sometime in January, late January or early February, only because a lot of their clients have been out with COVID that had already scheduled for December and January. So they're trying to coordinate their schedules to get everybody done. So I anticipate us starting sometime probably early February.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, Judge, to approve Armstrong and Bond for the outside audit. Second.
Motion by Commissioner File, second by Commissioner Martin, that we approve Armstrong Bond and Associates for our external audit. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Very last page, Judge.
The very last page?
Yes, sir. That is the last. There you go.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move into Agenda Item Number Eight, Richard L. Jackson County Judge, Discuss and Take Action on the Wilson County School Choice Week Proclamation. Okay, and here is the proclamation. A proclamation commemorating Wilson County School Choice Week, whereas all children in Wilson County should have access to the highest quality education possible. And whereas Wilson County recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in Wilson County to be successful adults. And whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of Wilson County. And whereas Wilson County is home to a multitude of high-quality public and non-public schools from which parents can choose for their children. In addition to families who educate their children in the home. Whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community. And whereas Wilson County has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children. And whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, and educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness for the need for effective educational options. Now therefore, we, the Commissioners of, Commissioners Court of Wilson County, do hereby recognize January 23rd through 29th, 2022 as Wilson County School Choice Week. And we can observe this to, we call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. Okay, and fix our signatures, seal the 28th day of December, 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve the Wilson County School Choice Week proclamation.
Motion by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Perdola, that we approve the proclamation commemorating Wilson County School Choice Week. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Throw it at you. Okay. Moving right along. Agenda Item Number Nine, Richard L. Jackson County Judge, Michelle Wood, Ranch Manager, Nine A, Discuss and Accept the Texas Humanities Relief Grant Award in the amount of eleven thousand, seven hundred, eighty-six dollars for the purchase and installation of two story walk exhibits in the cities of Stockdale and Laverne City Park.
I have the award letters and agreements. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. We applied for this library grant back in November, I believe, and we received notice that we were awarded. These are for the Story Walk Program, which basically is an exhibit where kits are installed in the choice parks. And basically, the library takes reading outdoors. This is in response to the COVID pandemic. The library thought it would be, you know, creative, innovative idea to get people out and about as well as reading and engaging outdoor programs. So we were awarded that grant. The grant will provide funds for the installation of two parks, actually two and a half parks. So we will keep the other six kits as kind of like a maintenance type thing. If there is any vandalism or destruction of the kits, at least we have someone on hand to replace them. The library is going to be working with the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts and possibly some high school or some volunteers to get those kits installed. The reason why Stockdale and Laverne were chosen first, they were, they were quick to respond and provide the extra vigilance over the exhibit once the exhibit is installed by their, by their police officers to reduce the potential for vandalism. So, great thing. The next thing on the horizon for these, for this particular project is another grant that we do in March. And we'll look to install one in both and at Hilton Park as well. And the idea is also to possibly have some pop-up type story walk programs as well. So on the right, on the right path to being a little bit different and innovative when it comes to getting people outdoors and reading. So if I can get your approval, we can forward that particular grant and get those kits purchased and installed.
Nikki, who do you have to take care of all of this?
Nikki Meyer.
She's, okay, she's?
She's our outreach librarian.
Okay, she does it all?
She's, she has picked the stories, she has priced everything out. She, she has each of the walks already planned. We're just waiting for the bill to be forwarded.
Okay. So she'll do it at Stockdale, Laverne, or? Okay. And then when we get the grant for both in Hilton and Lake River Park, the same?
Yes, yes. Sarah, Sarah was, the San Antonio River Authority was where she started with, with the idea when COVID was out. So that way the storytimes could still continue and families can get outside and do their exercise. What it is, is you have like an exhibit that has a two-fold page of a storybook. So you read this story, but the next time you read this story, when you get down to the end, there's a QR code that has activities to extend the walk. It could be food that you could take at home, it could be music you could listen to, and it has a survey at the end. And we have enough books to rotate quarterly, I believe it is.
Okay.
Judge, I make a motion that we accept the Texas Humanities Relief Grant Award in the amount of eleven thousand, seven hundred, eighty-six dollars.
Motion by Commissioner Wiley, second by Commissioner Perdola, that we accept the Texas Humanities Relief Grant Award. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And each one's for different.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Moving right along, Nine B, Discuss and Accept the Texas State Library Archives Commission Digital Navigator Grant Award through its memorandum of understanding, the amount of a hundred and ten thousand dollars for the hiring of a new librarian and implementation of the digital navigator program.
All right, so this again, we applied for back in November. And we received word not too long ago that we were awarded. We submitted a budget for seventy-seven thousand that would include the hiring of a librarian, one or two interns, as well as a number of pieces of computer equipment and supplies and general office supplies to assist Nikki and this new librarian that would be involved in this digital navigator program. So quickly, what a digital navigator program is basically connecting those folks that either are uneducated, don't want to get involved in the internet, are just reluctant to, to buy a smartphone or whatever, whatever, whatever have you, whatever have you. Or go to the library and receive assistance from Nikki's resources already. This is going to bring, allow them to bring hotspots and devices home. And with some minor instruction as well to, to help get the folks connected. Again, we're looking at probably about fifteen kits. Nikki and, and Nikki and possibly whoever this new librarian will be will be administering that program. And the idea behind this program is to, to collect sufficient data. This is a pilot program from the state with the potential for the funding to continue. So it's just a matter of how good we, we collect data and the types of data that, that we are trying to gather. And of course, we are going to get trained as well. There's some training ongoing currently. So with that, the reason why it's a hundred and ten thousand is because we had the opportunity, once we were, received the award, to go back and look at our budget that we submitted and increase it to a hundred and ten thousand. So that's exactly what we did after we thought about it and talked about it. I recommended to Nikki that she's probably going to need a lot more help, especially the new librarian. So this, the hundred and ten thousand would also include two additional interns and some more devices and some more hardware and equipment for the, for the program. So good way to start. Like I said, it is a pilot program. And depending on how we do, we'll, we'll hopefully get continued funding.
Okay, so for you and Nikki, so this may be perpetual. So we hire this person, hopefully we'll get the grant next year?
Well.
Or how?
It's going to, it's going to be tricky and, and the Texas State Library Archives Commission is definitely aware of how, how cumbersome they made it for us. But we're going, we're going to work through it and, and yes, depending on the data. And, and I have talked with the financial folks up at TSLAC and they are saying that there is likely continued funding.
Okay. And this librarian that we would be hiring, in case, if, if we had made the fifty thousand like we were afraid we were going to do or thought we were going to do, this would be that librarian?
Correct.
Or could be?
Correct.
If she stays on for ten years? Okay.
So if I can get your approval on this one, we can afford this one.
I'll make a motion to accept the Texas State Library Archives Commission Digital Navigator Grant Award through its memorandum of understanding, the amount of a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Perdola, that we accept the State Library Archives Commission Digital Grant Award. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything to sign?
Yeah, we should get a contract by next month.
Okay. Then we'll move on to Nine C, Discuss and Accept the Homeland Security Department Operation Lone Star Grant Award in the amount of four hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents administered by the Office of the Governor.
Again, this is something we applied for back last month. We did receive notice last week, last Monday, that we will award it the entire amount. It was not reduced, which is something that I thought might happen. So this will fund two positions for two years, along with several pieces of equipment, including vehicles and fringe benefits, all the, all the, all the good stuff in there. vehicles, and fringe benefits, all the, all the, all the good stuff in there, dedicated to the interdiction activities ongoing with the sheriff and the sheriff partnering with other directly impacted counties on our border.
Would that be interdiction here or interdiction down there?
Interdiction here, but I think if they need help, we...
Then they're going to call them and say, send them?
Yes.
And you're obligated to send them, probably?
Yes.
Okay. But it won't be any expense to us anyway.
It's no expense to us. They're paying for everything, all our uniforms, equipment, fuel, salaries.
Will they be like a regular Wilson County Sheriff's deputy uniform?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they're basically a full-time deputy position just targeting human smuggling and drug interdiction.
Now, there might be some, I, I do have to confirm with the state as, when I was down south a few weekends ago or weeks ago, I did notice some vehicles that were labeled with the operation, I forget the other operation that's currently in place. That might...
Lone Star, Stone Garden.
Stone Garden, that's where it was, Operation Stone Garden. I don't know if that's going to be required, they haven't said anything, but it's something that, you know, as far as particulars...
Would these vehicles have to be a different color scheme or...
I may, I may just have to put the wording on there, their Operation Lone Star.
Yeah.
Which...
So with your approval, we can get started as well?
I make a motion that we approve the Homeland Security Department Operation Lone Star Grant Award in the amount of $411,567.38.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Wylie, second by Commissioner Martin, that we approve the Homeland Security Department Operation Lone Star Grant Award. Is there any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Michelle, do we have a note, a dollar amount of grants, the money that we received last year?
I have not pulled, pulled that together, but it's, it's, yeah, it's well over the $750,000 threshold.
I mean, the total, I'm talking about everything that we've got.
Total since the, since the beginning of the, oh gosh.
It's probably on our single audit from last year for, for last...
For last year, doesn't include any of this year.
Yes, Sir Kira, I said the total number.
I can let me get that for you.
Thank you.
Michelle and Brenda, our new dump trucks, they arrived in Peterville, and they have been sent to OX Body to have dump beds put on.
Oh, good.
So...
Is that just yours or everybody's? Oh, good.
Hold on.
I was wondering about that.
I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna follow up with them to see...
They all came, they all came in and shipped them to Houston to get the bodies put on. I was calling to find out because I had a dump truck at Motorbowl.
Oh, my God.
Oh, no.
And the oldest one I had, and it's, it's one we were planning on...
Those are the ones from Rush?
Yeah.
Is it one you got to cut a hole in the side of the block anyway?
Yes.
We already got that down.
I was calling to find out where they were, and he said, oh, yeah, they came in, I forgot to call you all along.
Good deal.
All right, well, I'll touch base with her on that and get y'all to do it.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, moving along to agenda item 10, Christina Moose, interim county treasurer, financial report, and we got it.
I got it.
One to mark, yes, only one. Morning.
Thank you.
And of course, copy, fill out, sign, and label, so you can add your question.
Okay, thank you.
Today's report is another one, of course, so feel checked there if anybody has any questions. It does get any balances as well, ending for all of our accounts, our certificates, our investment pools, and then of course lease purchases that we still have outstanding on. You will see it though, that the report is a monthly summary of NRI system, just shows you the different things from every day that we have, any balances as well. And I have a need, please focus that whistle. Let's stay positive. Different old ones, you still have existing stamps.
I have a question.
Yes?
And maybe, maybe it's not so much it uses during there, but is there any benefit to looking at refinancing or redoing the certificates of obligations with the interest rates the way they are right now? Since that, since that, I guess...
I think we've had, wait, 10 years, it hasn't been 10 years.
That's what I'm saying, some of them aren't just yet matured on, some of them actually did renew prior to me, and so those are locked in and then some aren't coming out. That is something you definitely can look at. I can give you like a dental list of when they are coming up, and we can see interest rates are slowly...
Right, we may, we may.
Surely, so maybe at the time when they do mature, we can sit down and look before it's locked in, I can let them know and see where we're at. So, yes, we can, but they are at time, yeah. Hopefully we have nothing else hit, and we can definitely do that. It's very minimal at the moment, but yes.
See, a couple more years for this debt of obligation for all construction?
Yeah.
We can do that.
And you're talking certificate, you were saying CD's credit, is that what you referred to?
No, no.
Oh, the top, I apologize about that. Okay, no, I misunderstood. Then yes, that, that, like you said, the judge will have to look into that because I'm, and that gives more to...
No, CDs, you're not going to get anything.
No, yeah. I was just like, well, it's coming up, sure, a little bit. Yeah, let me look into this and all.
I'll make a motion to approve the treasurer's report for this report, similar to... Or no, pending, no group?
Yes, this is the report that's in, was in hand on November 30.
For the month of November 2021.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Faal. Is there any more discussions, questions, any additions, additions? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So we... The treasurer's report. Okay, agenda item number 11, Jalen T. Butterford, Human Resource General Specialist.
I have nothing.
Careful in personnel changes?
I have nothing today.
Everybody was off, so they didn't.
That's right.
Didn't. Okay. This is probably a first.
Can be.
Okay, agenda item number 12, Brenda El Trevino, county auditor, financial report and bills?
Bills.
Just bills?
I have $248,231.30.
The ones that come up for renewal, yes.
Okay.
And we also noticed on page four, board floor, those are the first invoices that are being charged to the American Rescue Plan.
I'll make a motion to approve bills.
Motion by Commissioner Martin?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Perdola, that we approve the bills. Are there any, is there any more discussions, any questions, or any changes to be made? If not, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so we have paid the bills. Okay. And this was pretty quick. Moving on to the last, number 13, adjournment cap, 9:42. Do you, do the black bean have to keep all up and staker, George?
I think so, sir.